All right, are we ready? All right. To the meeting to order. We'll call Danny here. Damon here. Kimberly here. Diana here. Jeff. Rob.
Here.
And I'm also here. Do you have some probably milliliters of wood?
Yes.
All right, please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do you have a volunteer commission statement?
I don't think I do. The Mount Horeberry School District in partnership with the community is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging our students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilled members of society.
Thank you. All right, to A, approval of the presented revised agenda. Second motion by Jeff. Seconded by Kimberly. Any discussion? All of the favors say aye. Are opposed? All right, to B, approval of the November 19th, 2018 regular and exact session minutes. Second motion by Jeff. Seconded by Kimberly. Any discussion on those? All of the favors say aye. Are opposed? All right, to 3A, student's highlights.
We're so excited to introduce one of the finest students at the Intermediate Center. When the Intermediate Center was thinking about a student that they could bring to the board, Logan came in front center.
Absolutely, absolutely. We just want to step up next to the family. We've got Logan next to Mr. Farnsworth. Logan is a fifth grader at the IC. And he is, when we got to talking about it, Logan is just a student who demonstrates so many strengths. He demonstrates a growth mindset, knowing that through his hard work and dedication, that he can really work hard to meet his goals. He has a positive attitude and really encourages everyone else to give their best when they're working in the classroom. He is a leader and a friend to everyone. Logan understands that students may have different needs and he's very sensitive to those. If he sees someone who's sitting alone at the lunch table, he'll sit by them. If he sees someone needs a friend to play with them at recess, he'll invite them to come play. So, he just demonstrates so many strengths that we appreciate at the IC. And one of the things we talk about a lot when we read the book Only One You is, we encourage students to use their gifts and strengths to make the world a better place. And that is something Logan does every day, just like being an awesome kid that he is.
Mr. Farnsworth, we're so glad you're here too. Tell us about Logan.
Well, everything that Ms. Hughey said is totally true. He does have his hair combed every single day.
That's all of our boys.
Their kids look great every single day because they have a third, fourth, and fifth grader. So I have. So Andy's in fourth grade and Devin has dance practice tonight. So he's not here. But all those things that Ms. Hughey said about Logan, absolutely true. He's one of those kids that if there's somebody that needs a friend, Logan's over there and I'll, hey, come on over, be with us. You know, or he'll go, if someone's inviting themselves at lunch, he just goes and says, nobody tells him to do that, he just does it on his own. He's a great kid, great family. And we're lucky to have him. So, nice job, buddy.
Let's get Logan around. Vice President, also IC. They have time to take a picture together with everyone, Mom and Dad. Let's get the whole family together.
This is Matt and Tina, Andy, and Cameron.
Where's the best spot?
Probably just right up here is pretty good.
I'll probably put you in the front here, but that's okay. And then can we give you this nice, this nice certificate? Did this all come?
It's okay. You guys can come on. Come on. I don't mind if you tell your background. You guys will appreciate it.
Perfect.
Oh, that's amazing. Love, Harris. Yes. Okay. And one, we have a number of cameras here. And then, no one minds taking. All right.
Yay, Logan. Thank you. Congratulations, Mom and Dad. We appreciate you guys coming out to support your program.
We do, yeah. All right. So now we're going to bring these two to the school.
Well, they've got some great schools going on. We're in the pros for our winter season, right? Had the opportunity to see our wrestlers on Friday night competing with all their hearts, looking good. Girl's basketball continues to impress as does boys' basketball. A lot of club activities and of course, this time of year, we're doing our listening concerts. I think the Intermediate Center actually has their fifth grade statement on Friday afternoon at 2:00. I saw that. Your board, we'll make it a point to get over there. Say, this book here has been a fascinating read. This is called Silver Linings Playbook. And it's part of a community read that we're doing tomorrow night, right, Katie?
That's correct.
Do you want to tell anyone about this great book and what we're doing?
Well, the book discussion group is being sponsored by the Mount Horeberry Mental Health Coalition. And so one of the many ideas that the coalition came up with, just to, I guess, facilitate an opportunity for people to get together, but also to talk about mental health issues would be to have a series of book readings with the books having a mental health topic.
And this was one of the first ones selected, right?
That is correct. It was recommended by the librarians at our home library. And yeah, everybody's welcome for 6:30 at the library tomorrow night.
And then we want to thank our Board of Education, also make the public again to all of our staff. We're going to have our board have an opportunity to stop by in our buildings on Thursday between 8:00 and about 10:30 in the morning, just to check in and see all the great things that are happening in our school. So staff listening in, we'll also include this in our board recap. Please know that your board welcomes hearing your thoughts and perspectives on things working well and maybe some things we could work to improve on in our school too. So that's good to hear. Lots going on.
All right. Does anybody else have anything? All right, I'll have one plug. The K-5 PTO craft night is Monday from 5:00 to 8:00. There's not a lot of letters this year, I'll fill that out. All right, moving on to 3C, citizen's comments. Brent Fritz.
I'm so my age now. You're comforting. Yeah. It's great to see so many familiar faces. For those that haven't met me, I'm Brent Fritz. I'm the co-owner of the Academy Little Vikings and a proud collaborative MH4K partner for the past four years. This school board, I just wanted to let you know how grateful I am in the fact that it has allowed sites like the Academy to become stakeholders in early childhood education in our community. Every year at contract renewal time, I personally come to thank this board for the gift that they give to the children and families that our center supports through the MH4K program. I want to say that I will always be a supporter of collaborative 4K. And I was one of the original sites that had worked alongside the district, and there's no one that wants to see this succeed more than me. It aligns with our community's vision as a village that takes care of each other. It also, in this model, there's a commitment by the school district to support early childhood education, which is why I think many of us are in this room tonight. The effects of collaborative 4K in our community is incredible. For example, we've been able to create so many more opportunities for children and families by providing an inclusive preschool program. Parents have told me that having a 4K program through a school district with a childcare option has made preschool programming possible for their child. Families in our community have had the support of childcare providers before and after this MH4K programs. This is huge as it allows for minimizing transitions for children and foster's family and children connections with consistent caregivers, creating a win-win situation. This inclusive model of preschool programming along with a collaborative model are primarily the reasons why my husband and I have taken our own money with the help of friends, family, the school district, the annual Lutheran church, and local business owners. We initially created Little Vikings 4K and now after five years are part of the Academy Little Vikings. The Academy itself is a perfect fit for the Mount Horeberry School District as we are both committed to supporting early childhood education. It's humbling to see the growth from when we started to now. Our organization has been able to provide many full-time jobs, which include both health insurance benefits. We employ several people from the Mark's Program and are also good stewards to our community and surrounding community with monthly service projects. Little Vikings is helping to provide the best future for our community's children. And parents choose the Academy because we provide affordable, flexible, part-time, and full-time play-based learning opportunities. On the educator side, we have created a collaborative environment that helps our staff succeed. And daily we take care of 145 children with 36 MH4K students. I will leave you with this, starting a business is hard. As a daughter of a dairy farmer, hard work is part of my DNA. And I'd like to say that instead of getting up every morning and running to a barn to take care of cows, I get up every morning and run to a barn to take care of children. But like other childcare centers and startup businesses, we have had our share of challenges that we continue to learn from them. And I've talked personally to Dr. Sino and Mrs. Straka and Mrs. Teep about the challenges and that with every challenge, it provides another opportunity for collaborative support. And that's what makes me so proud of our community is the support that we lend each other. So once again, I'd like to thank this board for the consideration of a fifth year of collaborating in 4K and thank you for supporting us and our families.
Thank you. Is there any other citizen's comments? Jamie Baker.
You probably don't need the microphone because I'm allowed to hit the teacher voice. I'm an MGA rep at the middle school library and I just want to thank you guys for everything that you do and giving up your Monday nights to come to these meetings and sometimes Wednesdays for committee meetings. It's really appreciated by all of us at MGA. So thank you.
Thank you. Any more? That's all? All right, anybody else? All right, moving on to 4A, there is an addendum. Personal transit.
Motion to approve.
Second motion by Jeff. Seconded by Danny. Any discussion? All of the favors say aye. Are opposed? All right, motion carries. Moving on to 5, consent agenda. Is there anything anybody wants to pull out? Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Kimberly. Seconded by Jeff. Any discussion? All of the favors say aye. Are opposed? All right, moving on to 6A, building bridges update.
I just saw our Director of Student Services reach out to a couple of our guest presenters. Would it be okay if we postpone that just a little bit? We're fortunate to have Katie here.
Yeah, school showcase, the Intermediate Center.
All right. Katie.
So I shared a presentation from Dr. Sino that I think everyone had an opportunity to take a look at. It really wanting to showcase our work that aligns with your strategic plan in our community areas. In my presentation, what I did is I thought maybe we could spend a little bit more time looking at our student well-being goal, as I know that that's been something that's been on our hearts this year and really wanting to focus on that. All right, Dr. Sino, if you wouldn't mind, we'll get the first word and then growth letters to five. So this year we're focusing on informational text for our literacy goal. And you can jump right to the next page of the next slide. So one of the things I know that you hear frequently is about our progress implementing our professional learning communities. And one big step that IC has been able to take this year is some common planning time for four or five of our grade level classroom teachers each hour of the day. And so that's been a pretty big win for us to have something consistent for each grade level team where they can get together and read one another. Specific to informational texts, we started with gathering some information about what staff are currently doing, how they're using informational text, how often and what ways, and what are some obstacles that they run into. And from that information, some of our literacy leaders were able to take some next steps. Our reading teachers and our librarian, they gathered some resources for online tools where teachers can easily access informational texts, as well as Jen Rudolph, our librarian, decided to start highlighting informational text at her checkout. And that's a picture of her shelves that she was there in. You'll notice that there are a fair number of empty spots around the books. And she said that indicates how quickly they're pulling them off the shelves. And she's connected that to their science and social studies curriculum, as well as different units that come up in their literacy curriculum. In math this year, we're focusing on operations and algebraic thinking domain. Again, POC, improvisation is a big part of our action plan. And if we go to the next slide, one of the things that's helped tremendously in this area is the increase in technology that the district has provided for fifth grade. We have fifth grade gone to class-wide Chromebooks. And one of the neat ways of it's being used is to gather really quick formative assessments where at the end of every one of our math lessons, there is a very quick assessment where students are able to indicate their understanding. Teachers have those results instantaneously and then they're able to pull together groups to work with them during wind time or follow up with them individually. And that's been something they've been using grade level or grade-wide. And then that strategy and hearing of their success has inspired some of our third and fourth grade teachers to do that as well. Different number of Chromebooks, but something that they've been working with as well. So for our student well-being goal, this is an area that we needed to gather a little bit more information on because as opposed to our academic areas, we don't have necessarily tools that gathers type of information on a regular basis. So we developed our own survey and we'll walk through those results right now. So our first question, well, let me back up a little bit as to our rationale. So school connectedness is a pretty well research-based, sorry, is a pretty well research-based approach to, for student well-being. The CDC, in one of their informational guidelines for school connectedness, states research shows that students who feel a genuine sense of belonging at school are more likely to do well in school, stay in school, and make healthy choices. The sense of belonging is often described as school connectedness, connected students believe their parents, teachers, school staff, and other students in their school care about them and about how well they are learning. So you can see why that would be a good tool to work towards. It promotes many benefits that students who are well-connected to school, they get better grades, they stay in school longer, they attend school more regularly, as well as protects against risky behaviors such as experimenting with frozen alcohol, violent behavior, emotional distress, and suicide. So that's why we decided to focus on this, to put together this survey. So the first question we had is to try to find out how many adults students felt they could go to if they needed help. And students responded very positively to this. Ninety-two percent of students reported two to three adults who could help them. And I'm guessing some of those students have more, have more students or more adults they could go to. And just 2.1% reported no adults. This was taken within about the first six weeks of school. And so it was pretty early and we hoped to make good rolls with some of those students. The next one asked about if students felt comfortable going to an adult if they had something that was bothering them. And this is where we saw a little bit of difference between the last question where 46% of students would feel comfortable all of the time, almost of the time, or 43% would feel comfortable some of the time, and 10% never. And we took these results back to the classrooms where either in community circle groups or in a guidance lesson with Mr. Buddy, students reviewed these results and discussed them. And it was interesting that some of the things they came up with. Some of the feedback we got from them said it would kind of depend on how they read the question, if indeed they had something that was bothering them at the time that they could imagine going to an adult. Some shared that, well, getting help isn't really an easy thing to do, and so it's not something I would exactly feel comfortable doing. And others identified, well, or wondered, what if the student was new, what if they were shy, or what if the problem was personal. Regardless, this is the area that we decided to focus on to see if we can make some improvements in this, to have more students feeling comfortable approaching adults when they need something. The next question focused on whether they felt included in the classroom. And again, results were very positive. Over 81% responded all of the time or most of the time. And again, when classes discussed this, students showed a very empathetic response. They wanted to know who in their classroom wasn't feeling included. They wanted to be able to help. They, if, from their perspective, even one student who didn't feel included was too many. And one of our third graders, her response was, wouldn't it be wonderful if the circle was all blue? Then everyone would feel included all of the time. The next question asked if students feel like they have friends at school. I got another positive response, over 88% feeling that they have friends at school all of the time or most of the time. And the next one is, so even if they're not friends, do people in this school help each other? And 61% of students felt that this was true, all of the time or some of the time. And our last question focused on school safety. I feel safe at this school. And again, another strong response, 90% of students feel safe all of the time or most of the time. So overall, we felt our results were very positive. Again, we chose this school not because we felt like this was a weakness of ours, but more something that with everything else we're working on, we didn't want to lose sight of. And again, with the losses that we've experienced for this community in the past year, we felt it was really important to focus on this this year. And as you can see in this list, student well-being is a priority of ours and staff are doing many, many things to promote this and support positive relationships and school connections. Well, we talk a lot about academics because that's where much of our data lies and we assess that and we monitor that. Our students' social and emotional learning is our foundation for our work in this integral to many things that we do. So this is our, this screen was our baseline. We're going to collect more information to see how our students indicate, how their responses change over time. And as with any survey, there is some room for error. We had, in our student discussions, we did have a few students say, well, I'm just having a bad day, so I reported negatively to a lot of the questions. So it'll be interesting to see how those change over time. But we're really going to see if we can focus on improving the number of students who feel comfortable going to an adult when there is something bothering them. And then on our last slide, well, we don't have a goal for it specifically. Staff well-being is also important to our work at the IC. We are focusing on maintaining strong traditions in the IC, gathering together, sharing food collegially, celebrating, learning of all mindful practices, and keeping the life of communication open. So that is our school showcase for this month. Questions for me?
May I make a comment?
Yeah.
I have to tell you, there are so many things I appreciate about you, but there are two things that stand out in my memory of all that you do at the IC. Thank you for that leadership, first of which, your ability to think systemically around the complex issues that confront all of our schools, but namely the Intermediate Center. You have this real penchant for drawing people around you to problem solve. And that leads me to my second comment, that's being realized by staff. When you look at the results so far of our staff wellness survey, repeatedly Katie's recognized by her staff for just being that can-do person, that person who's there for her staff and understands that she's one of the greatest advocates for kids. So thank you for your leadership. You picked the heck of a kid today with Logan. Isn't he a delight?
He's wonderful.
And how fortunate we are to have your leadership. Thank you for all you do.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your efforts.
Yeah. I just want to add, the fifth grade team, we believe is a great team, having the pleasure of working with all of us, definitely with technology and management. Have had great input in their really drawing things and thank you for all the work.
Well, likewise, the fifth grade team just really appreciates all of the work. And when we implement things, it's important that we do it well and we make sure that we get things off to this effective start and that they get what you're doing. Appreciate it.
All right, so we're going to jump back to 6A, building bridges update.
I'm gonna do this tonight. You guys have already sent you the survey that we had all the teachers who participated in Building Bridges last year participate. And so as you remember, last year was the first year we did Building Bridges. We do it kindergarten through eighth grade. And at the end of the year, the teachers who participated directly with our students filled out this survey. And so really we were looking at, did attendance improve? Did behavior improve? Did we see changes within students on a day-to-day basis if they participated in the program? And hopefully you had a chance to look at those, but overall, the results were really positive. In things like improving attendance, it's about 63% of teachers reported that students had better attendance. Eighty-nine% noticed improved behavior. Some of the other highlights were that parents and guardians were more involved with students was 95%. So those are huge numbers. And so when you're looking at the goals of a program, it's to build the bridge, right, between homeschool and community. It really appears that the first year was incredibly successful. At the end too, there was staff could leave, you know, information they had, they asked two questions, good comments, examples of how Building Bridges supported you. And they really talked about how the meetings were helpful, they explained issues, they were able to get in and talk to the family, go do home visits, really talk about how that really benefited them. And then maybe they learned something different and were able to talk to the school, so we kind of knew different points of view. And, you know, capital letters, thank you all, you know, for all the work that you're doing. And then how can we make it more successful, right? I mean, the biggest thing is, you know, we love to see, right, is get more family served, which is one of the components that they had wrote. And then just, you know, last year being that our first year, it was just really learning about what Building Bridges does and what they can value and what they can bring to the table. So Emily and Ashley have been doing an incredible job within our district, making connections, learning our systems, learning our community and the resources that we have. And as we continue to grow those, they'll continue to grow the program. So we're really happy with the first year and we're, as many of you may know, Ashley was on maternity leave for this first semester. So we did have less students because we only had one Building Bridges staff for the first semester. She'll be back in a couple of weeks and then we'll be back to full capacity by second semester.
Thank you for all this data.
You're very welcome.
This is awesome. All right.
Thank you very much.
All the computers on this, if you want to stay on the outside, please don't start all of them. All right, we will move on to 6A, referendum update. Bless you guys.
So we just had a couple of thoughts off the start here.
Actually, we talked last time, we thought we were going to fight in the weather, but we're still fighting the weather a little bit, primarily with the spray insulation still. So what we've done there is we've actually figured years, and we have to shelter our work for the masonry work that goes on, so we start to put a brick on there. So we're partnering up and, you know, sharing shelters with those folks so that they can get their work done right before we start to do our work. The structural field, for the most part, is complete. The entire thing, except for, with the new cafes, basically, so that's the next apartment piece associated with that, all the load-bearing masonry is pretty much wrapped up as well. There's still interior non-load-based masonry that's going on. Slabs are being poured, and probably a couple weeks out from the highlight, for me, for concrete work is the area where we're going to have a ground concrete finish, so it's a polished concrete. So that will happen probably about a month, month and a half or so, give or take depending on the closures and weather and things like that. Roofwork slated to start this week, so I don't know if it actually started today, but I know they're ramping up for that, too, beginning today. So that is on the, kind of in the back area of the building, that area B and C and E. And then there's some work that will also be happening, but I believe that's going to start, it's over the existing school, on that kind of 200 wing area, or a bus to the new cafe space there. So that roof gets a little bit of rework, so as long as there aren't too many people in those areas, we will be able to jump on that. But pretty much just kind of moving right along, happy with how things are progressing, and we'll fight the weather battle for another four months.
There's a couple of spots in the progression of the construction project that you call the major milestones, and certainly the one coming up for us is to achieve enclosure. So it's exciting that we've had pre-construction meetings on roofing and glazing, glass install, so once that roofing work is done and buttoned up and the windows are in, it just opens up a lot of opportunity for the interior work to progress. You know, with the school more so than really any other building type, we're very reticent to start any other interior work to achieve that full enclosure. And that milestone is not far off in front of us.
Awesome. Have there been any questions? You guys are going to kick out of this. I had a parent tell me the other day, do you know it's two stories? I was like, I did, I did tell them, I did that one. Because now you can, I mean, you can really see it, and they hadn't really driven that direction. It was pretty, pretty funny.
A little later on in the agenda, we look forward to including Ryan and Nate in the conversation about some of the supplemental school three, too. So thank you both for making the drive out for Milwaukee tonight.
All right. Thank you. All right, 6D, new webpage launch.
Thanks for having me here tonight. I just wanted to start saying, I notice it's almost a year to me that I was standing here with my family and you approved my heart. So I hope you feel that was a wise decision.
Getting a first read.
Yeah, thank you.
Congratulations.
Yes, thank you. It's been quite an eventful year. A pleasure to work with a lot of great people, and we continue to have a relationship. So one of the things that was presented to me was moving toward the website, which we moved away from mhasd.k12.wi.us, and now we have a new domain, mounthorupschools.org. Our other, our current old site, I guess you could call it, it's our current, our old site, mhasd.k12.wi.us is still active, it's not being updated. It will be turned off December 31st, 2018, and at that time, if somebody goes to a shortcut or a link or navigates it, they will be redirected to mounthorupschools.org. This is hosted by CMS for Schools, which many school districts around Wisconsin currently use it. We've been referencing them. They've been great to work with, they're cheaper than our current provider, or their old provider, I should say, Blackboard. And I felt like there was a lot more intuitive, easier for the staff to navigate and build pages. Some of the goals were a simple, fresh design and navigation, ADA compliance, more mobile-friendly experience. So when we were building, you know, you would see how it would look on a desktop, on a laptop, and then you would pick out your phone, and you would see how it would look on that. It's challenging, our old site was not very mobile-friendly. Consistent look and feel for every site visitor, multiple language translation capabilities, and we can do emergency alerts on the top banner of the screen. There's an activity scheduling that is integrated in at the high school and middle school level. So it's, we've been really, you know, there are a lot of people that were involved with this at the suggestion of Ryan. We approached the PTO steering committee prior to launch and solicited their feedback. We had many iterative, excuse me, iterative sessions with staff, in the course of doing this, to kind of not perfect it, but just keep trying to continually improve it. And we also solicited feedback from CMS for Schools, many times worked out little bugs here and there. And although this is a team effort, and I'll give my thanks here a little bit to everybody who's involved, I take personal responsibility for the site, any thing that is on it, any issues, you can direct my way, and I'll do my best to make sure that they get implemented or changed. So I just want to thank for showing the little bit of the site, welcome to navigate on your phone, computer.
Can you talk about how it's ADA accessible now?
Yes, yes. So this little, this little thing down here, this little toolbar, you can do different fonts, and it also helps for screen readers, which is part of ADA accessibility. Some other language translation is part of it as well. So that is a very big topic nowadays. The site in and of itself is more ADA accessible. For the tools that, there's not one standard necessarily that ADA complies to, there's many, but it's more the effort that we've tried to go through to try and make it accessible. Is it perfect? Definitely not. You have a lot of improvements we can make, but it's definitely a hugely forward for previous work previously. So there's, we've broken up, we have district-level pages, kind of like our old site, and we have school-level pages where each school has their own site. What we did was, we had started the district pages, and then we brought in the secretaries that the principals selected that would administer their school sites, and gave them training. We also did teachers training to try to move the content over for their individual teacher webpages, which you can get to on the staff directory and also under each school site. You can get to their webpage, the link to it. There, we can change pictures, you know, we've been trying to find a sweet spot between making it, you know, on your phones, so you can see the picture well, and also on the desktop. I think we're getting there. I can't thank enough Tammy Braddock and Megan Leonard, Sarah Strata, they really helped spur along this, occasionally kicking me a little bit, saying, Josh, let's do this, which I needed at times. And we, you know, came through and we worked together. And the individual building secretaries, Kim Sonenberg, Ken Tucker, Corinne McCarthy, Keller Richardson, Colleen Kittleson, Colt Teague, Kim Ackerman was instrumental as well. And the building principals, I can't thank enough for giving the time for your staff to get trained. They also took an effort in building their principal message to the public. We've had a lot of very positive feedback so far, and I look forward to continually improving this. So I welcome your feedback, we'll do our best to implement it. Some things, I'll be honest, we can do, some things we are at the mercy of the underlying template of the site. So we can do some things, can't change everything, which is good and bad.
Questions from anybody?
I played on it for a while today, as you know, because I got stuck, but then I had it was all user error, so it was fine. But it was awesome. I was, I was able to be like, hmm, I wonder where this is, and it was where I thought it would be, instead of sometimes on a current site, I'm like, this, no, it's not there. So it was really great. And I love how the Board of Education stuff goes straight up to Board backs. So you can just, everything's there, which is great. It's awesome.
We are making the migration things to Jackie's good work of our board's policies to board docs, so that it can now be searchable for families as they're looking for individual topics. Might I add, by any measure, Josh Cataldo, even though he's celebrating his first anniversary in the district, he has moved our district light years in that short period of time. This is just the latest example of his leadership, continually is evident in many, many areas, and we're just very thankful that you've accepted the call to serve in this immediate district. Thank you, thank you for your leadership.
Well, I appreciate your kind words, and I really liked being here. Thank you for having me.
All right. Moving on to 7A, consider approval of contingency-funded referendum work.
Board members, we have two items related to tonight's expanded work. The first are those items that we call items that need to be funded, or requests be funded, I should say, under contingency dollars. As you know, we have established within our budget a sum of dollars for contingency-related items, and the largest amount, I believe that is your gold, yellow. And I looked at my friends at Gray, welcome, thank you for being here tonight. Who knew that we have rock in Mount Ork, and it cost us $403,000 to excavate and move that rock? I actually hear that's a little bit less than maybe what we even anticipated in terms of additional, additional dollars. This is on top of the amount of money that the board had already set aside for the excavation of the rock and unsuitable soil, and these sorts of things. I might ask if I could lead you to continue the conversation. Welcome to you. You're welcome to step up to the, to the microphone, please, and thank you. We're at this item here.
The $12,000?
Yes.
All right. My name is Nate Onside, by the way, I'm the Onside Architect for Art Tech, so I'm up here on a weekly basis attending the Jackson meetings and buying the visits, so I'm working with the staff closely on that. The $12,000 highlighted here, $12,085, I believe it is, is that there's a current air conditioning unit serving the administrative wing of the high school, and to avoid moving that unit, which would be a large cost in itself, we had to rework the new parking lot to be, and therefore, that $12,000 is added curb, revised grading, making sure that we're not having water issues down the road for any parking lot and up against the building there.
I remember, right, that air conditioning unit was actually going to be facing Eighth Street, and it really kind of was going to be a bit of an eyesore.
Right, that was the other option. Yes, so in an effort to, one, either put up or to leave it there, we would either have to move it to face Eighth Street and then put some type of fence or some type of ugly eyesore there that you would not want. So therefore, the district had asked us to look at keeping it in that location, and this is the added cost to do so. The next line item is 44, just under $45,000. So when we send out plans to the state, the state often has different comments that they come back on to make sure that we're requiring, or that we're meeting all the required codes and guidelines. A smoke guard is one that if we have an opening between the first floor and the second floor, such as we do in three different spots in your new addition of the high school, that it actually stops and slows the passage of smoke between floors. This was left out of the original documents, unintentionally. Ultimately, the district would have been paying for this type of device, whether it's today or whether it would have been on bid day, but this is the added cost, and that's why we're talking about bringing it out of this fund. The next line item is $9,100, and that is the revised footings for the new greenhouse. So when we put out a package of documents, we have, there's maybe three or four big players of greenhouse suppliers on the market. Not knowing how each specific one is going to want their footings and design of the support to be designed, we have to simply pick one, design it off of that manufacturer's guidelines, and then during the process of this greenhouse provider was selected, we need to look to make sure that our footings and things like that match. So there is $9,100 in additional cost for the new greenhouse there.
It's an added benefit of competitive bidding for the greenhouse itself, so if we had sole sourced the greenhouse and designed the footing and foundation specifically for that manufacturer, you wouldn't be paying that $9,100 necessarily, but you also might have gotten, as we have a price on the greenhouse itself, so it kind of balanced itself out.
So what's the size of your greenhouse? How big is it?
Ted, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's about 40 by 120, give or take that size. So it's a fairly significant size structure. The last line item highlighted in the gold is yellow, is about $16,400. This is an added cost to get water properly drained off the roof, as it's noted. What happened was, is as we were going through the drawings and we needed to coordinate with the existing roof structure, there were some unforeseen items that we saw dealing as we tied the new building into the existing roof. And so to add tapered insulation to get water to control off the roof properly, this is the added cost we're looking at.
So board members, you'll see under the gold column, under the gold rows, there's a column that says absolutely must complete, and you'll notice all of those have been checked, because we do believe they do need attention. But in the vast majority of these, the work is not completed. The item, of course, that's most expensive, that rock excavation, $400,000 plus, we obviously needed to do that in order to continue and make our timeline. So we're asking for the board's thoughtful consideration of allowing us to use contingency dollars to pay for those items, please. Second.
Motion by Jeff, seconded by Rod. Any discussion?
If I could just note one item related to contingency, I think as some of our team members have noted earlier, milestones specifically speaking, this is one major milestone related to contingency dollars, that being in this area, that, you know, once we got past this, we don't see a large number of dollar amounts related to contingency going forward. This is going to be, in our eyes, the biggest dollar amount we've seen towards.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion by Jeff, seconded by Rod. All those papers say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, consider approval of supplemental referendum work.
Well, this is where the really exciting news happens, because these projects would not be possible without the savings that were born out of the initial process. And so we're coming to you tonight in the hopes that we can continue finding additional projects that honor the original scope of the referendum question. So you'll find those items in Aqua. The first is a credit, how about that? Tell us about that.
So, and in relation to the PE storage area, which
And so we're coming to you tonight in the hopes that we can continue finding additional projects that honor the original scope of the referendum question. So you'll find those items in Aqua. The first is a credit. How about that? Tell us about that.
So in relation to the PE storage area, which is part of the area that's actually already been slightly completed, there is some revised scope in there to exactly what we wanted to do. And ultimately, there was a deduction in scope related to benches, related to storage trucks, and that is the almost $2,000 credit you're seeing there. The next line item is an add of almost $72,000. And Steve, I don't know if you want to speak to, if this is maybe a conversation topic?
Yeah. So we know that what we intend to do, with your permission, of course, is to adjust from a drywall situation in our most trafficked bathroom areas to CMU, construction masonry units. We think that that will create for greater sturdiness, create for ease of cleanliness, all sorts of things that we think will make it an even more inviting experience for those who are using the restroom off the main cafeteria and then off the collaboration area. And so we're asking for the Board's consideration to help maintain that area.
The next line item is at just under $17,500. In relation to the previous time that we had talked about supplementary scope, we had presented a large number talked about in adding additional renovation scope to the existing high school. You guys had previously approved that added scope. This $17,489 or $69 is to add some of the borrowed lights that are above the lockers back into the project. So currently, as you walk through the school, there's a bunch of glass above the lockers allowing light to flow in such as that. As part of the original scope that you guys approved last time around, we were infilling that in with drywall and making that all a renovated space. The Board, or the district had asked us to look at adding lights back in to share that natural light from the exterior of the building. And so this is affecting, I believe, the 200 and 400 hallways.
We talked with our teachers and they were part of the original design and said, gosh, wouldn't it be nicer to make it even more brighter, borrow some of that light in? And so this would be an enhancement to the first change.
There was some concern about acoustics. That was one of the main reasons that they weren't included in the original project supplement to renovate those corridors and classrooms. But in this case, these will be what we refer as punched openings into that drywall wall that Nate was referencing, rather than in the current scenario where you have the pieces of plexiglass running continuously with the classroom, the rising wall kind of applying to that in what's not a very well sealed detail. In a lot of cases, your flipping staff has come up with solutions to try to counteract that, but this will be a better detail where your CMU demising wall between classrooms will be sealed against the drywall partition and then those windows will be hollow metal frames within the drywall partition, fully glazed with stops and everything. So the acoustic performance will not as good as the drywall wall will be much better. You won't have the bleed between classrooms, which is the biggest part of the problem right now.
The next item on the Board here is for $7,300 and that's to add drinking fountains to collaboration areas and near the what will be new elevator. This is an add of two drinking fountains in total. It was simply an ask by the district to, as we're not seeing students travel from some of the interior portions of the addition to the other areas of the building, making walking time and time on the hallways less. The largest item that we're asking for consideration or presenting consideration is for the front plaza canopy. On the screen, you'll see a preliminary rendering of what the space can look like. Right now, you guys are familiar that you just have a single canopy, not really allowing for much cover in storms, rain, whatever it might be when waiting for parents or whatever that might be. The scope of this, Steve, could you go back to the previous, I think it was right, $455,500, we'll say. Go back to the image at that point. Thank you. So primarily, this is a, just a structure that can, then it's about in total length, not just the flat part, but from the eve portion on the right side, all the way through the flat, it's about 100 feet long. The backside is complete with benches that are made from masonry and then they have a cast stone top on them for students to sit at. Then there is, all of this is lit from within the canopy, both at the eve and then at, and then at the flat roof as well. In addition to the canopy itself, there's also the rework, which is what you're seeing with the new flagpole, the seating bench, all throughout there, which allows additional seating and new vegetation all the way planted through there. We believe this, working with the district, will provide a nice facelift to your existing building as well as being completely functional. The last item that I've not yet mentioned is you'll see that there's like a black, new black face at the new main entry. That would be new hollow, or new metal panel, new metal wall panel that goes on the existing brick wall. Currently, that existing brick wall is in rough shape. It's, it has some issues. So as part of enhancing this front drop-off area of this front, your main entrance, we had discussed with the district of putting metal wall panel on there, which matches the wall panel on the addition. And that would basically be a highlight to focus where the main entry is.
And very thoughtfully, folks have suggested maybe putting some more windows on the front as well. Might you speak to that?
Yes, thank you. I apologize that I left those off. So basically, right, what I believe is in that, yeah, that's what it will be. What is your current space?
Little theater.
Little theater, thank you. That sloped room, as part of the original project, gets filled in and that becomes your new LGI health room. To add more natural light into that space, the district has talked about adding two windows to that room. And then you'll see a little bit further down, only two of them are showing up in this image. However, that is, I believe, the wrestling room. And to add lights into that space as well, to not make this dark and dingy, we would match those same light patterns, but there would be three in that area based off the light room area there.
In the first rendering that we shared with the Board, you may remember we had the name of the school listed just atop this little area here. We got to thinking about how to make it even more inviting. And we understand that there's electricity to this area that we may want to try to do some backlighting of some lettering that could be placed up here and have it be a little bit larger. So we would eventually bring that to the Board a little bit later on. And the other piece I think we want to just mention to the Board is there'll be some work that'll be done in the lighting, of course, in the parking lot. We're about 50% capacity right now and we could always use some more lighting. That's for certain. And so that will be fixed, but we also want to have an opportunity to maybe think about approaching you folks about just retaining that entire front entryway as well. So that might be an added expense. All total, you're right, about $450,000. You may remember, Board members, when we presented just the one half, the south end of this plaza, the amount was $308,000. And it was thought that maybe we should get the entire scope of the work together before we approve something. And so that's what's been presented to you tonight. And then there was one more, wasn't there? No? So we're asking if the Board would please consider or certainly ask any questions regarding some of those items that we've proposed to you to convert out of our owner savings.
So when they deal with the removal of the current flagpole, put in the new one, where are you suggesting to put the temporary posting of the flag at?
That has not yet necessarily been determined at this point in time, but we will make that a priority going forward to make sure that is addressed in the midst of this change.
It's critical that we do that, right?
Exactly.
So I have a question about the, as it appears in the rendering, the poles, are they wrapped in brick? Is that what, that is charming the?
So down at the bottom, what would be the low seating height would be a brick, brick wall with a stone cap on it. But the black that you're seeing in the preliminary renderings is steel. So it's a very minimalistic approach to not making it too bulky and just having the exposed steel that will be painted.
Will that be the same brick that's why on the back of the building?
Yes. It's very close and it's made by the same supplier, so it would be that same brick.
So this part of the project still seems expensive to me. And what I think you can help me with tonight is some perspective. Help me to understand this expense. I don't think there's anybody, any, I certainly understand the need for something like this, but I have yet to get my arms around the expense for this sub-project. So maybe you can help me do that. Maybe you can give me some perspective and walk me through why this particular rendering is what we should do at the expense level that you suggested.
Part, well, I think so part of it is while, you know, the pieces in the rendering, the canopies, the seats and everything are the part that everyone is probably drawn to, grating is a big component of this. So if you're out there now, as you know, and come along that curb and it slopes up to the school building, probably in excess of two feet, I believe. And so on the right side of the edit where you've got the kind of seat walls with the built-in bench, you're showing some low maintenance benches.
Did you say no maintenance?
They're plastic.
So that's some pretty significant re-grading and rework in there in order to flatten it out and have it be accessible and more usable for students that are waiting for pickup and drop-off. With that, we have to retain the earth against the existing building because of the grades and the foundation of that existing piece. We need to maintain that. So there's some foundation work associated with that. In fact, there's a retaining wall on there to create that seat wall and then bring the grade down even with sidewalk. And then you obviously have fairly extensive masonry, steel roofing, skilled in order to create the in excess of 100 feet approximate, you know, covering for pickup, drop-off, entry and those types of things. So while it's in close space, there is, excuse me, a fairly significant scope of work there to produce that.
And as you look at that drawing, in your professional opinion, is there something that you wouldn't miss if it was gone?
I mean, I think that is maybe more of a functional question. Part of the directive for us in expanding beyond the initial plaza of Stephen said that was around $308 was primarily to create a covering. You know, I think that was a concern, obviously with Wisconsin winters as well as rain, to provide a little more protection for students that are waiting for pickup and drop-off. As well as creating something with a little more presence, obviously right on, you've got the canopy and you've got the, you know, the glass at the entry doors, but beyond that, there's not really much that signifies the entry. So I think the thought was that that extended canopy along with the potential for some signage, like Steve was saying, would really make this a prominent main entry to the school, especially with the context of, you know, the large project going on on the backside.
And then to add to some of Brian's comments, something that may not necessarily, I guess her feelings are to pull away, would be we've added the additional lights to the existing building. You know, there's a, it's a small cost, but to pull maybe the scope of those back could provide some cost savings, but by the time you pull maybe two of those five lights back, it's very minimal at that point.
I think one thing that could be considered would be we can reduce, so along the backside of the flat canopy, there's a seat wall again to add kind of seating for people that are waiting, but that's still that you could potentially reduce and it would eliminate some masonry and some of that seat top and as a way to reduce scope if that's the direction that we need to go.
I think it's nice that they're seating out there in this rendition. I mean, there's just, there's no place for the kids to sit right now at all.
So when your, okay, so when your canopy from there all the way beyond the front doors, that would be all recessed lighting in there given that?
That's correct.
Now what about over here?
That is an existing piece of the building that, it's part of the image, but we're reworking the steps there as part of the original project, but we're not touching any lighting there.
Okay. Can you pull up the spreadsheet beginning of the dollar amounts? Just that front entrance canopy is about 10% of all the contingency and savings combined. And my only concern is I don't have a grasp of how early this is in the project to take on a chunk that big and the part, all the parts would still be costing. I just don't want to see us, you know, put ourselves at risk. And again, I don't know how early we are in the project. So I guess my question would be, how late in the project could we do this? Because it seems to be more of an aesthetic, it's functional, it's definitely functional in how I function, but it seems to be a combination of aesthetic or function. So how long could we?
Sure. I think this may be a two-part answer, so maybe that's the first part and then let Nate and maybe Ted answer the second part. So I think the district, and we've had a few conversations prior to this, obviously along with the Building and Ground Committee last week, wanting to look at all these items in blue and yellow in the context of what was part of the regular scope of the construction project that went originally onto bid and what was the, you know, added scope. And so that's the reason for the difference between the yellow and the blue. So the blue was proposed to come out of the savings from the overall referendum amount. So as the Board discussed earlier this year, you know, taking out the portion you may not even borrow and looking at what's left under the portion that you have borrowed, that's where we are proposing that to be considered taking from. You had a $2 million construction contingency identified. And so with what's remaining there, like Nate said earlier, you know, the biggest potential of expense usually is unforeseen sign conditions, like you're running to the rock and the unsuitable soils. Beyond that, with all the renovation work that's still to come, there's definitely the potential for unforeseen conditions, things in walls that we weren't able to predict being there and that kind of thing, but generally, these are going to be your big ticket items. So that means that I think we're proposing maintaining a comfortable contingency after you potentially approve these things before you tonight. And then this would be out of that additional savings. So not really touching the construction contingency with this item, but more specifically looking at the savings in the overall products with the district, what we'd want to do. The costs of their, the items, I should say, that say still leading cost, those are items that have been identified by the district as priorities to look into and we're in the process of identifying or doing drawings for those ever to get costs.
May I just quickly interrupt? To that point, Damon, we still do have a very healthy amount of money left over in owner savings to accomplish those extra projects. There's an additional spreadsheet that we have not made public because it had an impact on bidding, but it's been made available to you on that second part of Board docs this evening. To suffice to say, I think I heard our owners rep say to us that he felt very comfortable last Monday with the amount of money we had left in contingency and the amount of work left to do it. Mike, might I be able to ask if that was an accurate assessment of what I heard you say?
Yeah, I think to just be very succinct, your point is it's too early to spend out this money knowing that we've got a lot of project left on us. So you're talking about managing risk. So we manage that risk entirely in this gold column of contingency. And we have a very comfortable amount of contingency left to manage that risk based on where we are, even after having spent what you see in the gold here. And the blue or the Aqua is just spending your savings and that's just up to you whether you spend it or you give it back or what have you. It doesn't have any impact on managing our risk.
And that Aqua would be without even touching the remaining $5.5 million we've been authorized to borrow and would permit us, we believe, to accomplish some of those other projects you see in white.
Stephen, maybe I could speak to the items in white and also address your other question. Items in white, simply going through there, the first two are related specifically to the high school as a part of-
As a part of a value engineering portion of the project, we're considering fastening the roof for an $1,000 credit. That is in process and not official, the number is official, but it's not an official paperwork at this point in time. The second item is actually a little bit of what I talked to you about, about the metal panel at the existing entrance. I talked to you about the drifting and rough condition. That was added later in the game. We're still pricing that right now. So the 450 you are seeing there is that entire piece there, but it just doesn't have the metal panel cost in there. Do I think that metal panel cost is a large, significant amount of money? No, when I think about large, significant amount of money, do I think it's more than 40 or 50,000 dollars? I would say no, but I mean, we'll have to see how this comes in. Then as we go through the next three are looking at middle school related items. Drainage at the southwest corner of this specific school. We are in the process of working through pricing with three different vendors on that. We have one price right now and it's looking very comfortable, under $25,000. The next item is the middle school steel roof. As you guys are all aware, the district has approved and the work has been completed to replace the majority of this building's roof. However, we had a building envelope consultant come out and review the building, and those are kind of the next two items that you're talking about. Steel roof, which needs to be, which is suggested to be replaced. So we're working through a great design for that, a viable set of documents for that. And then the masonry peers and some other issues of water finding its way into this building that while we're here and applying services for you, we want to make sure that you're also happy with the building you have here. So we're talking about steel roof that needs to be replaced and then masonry issues about flashing water away from the building and not letting water back in. So these are items that Brian is in works on putting together some direction for pricing in the future, and that's why we're putting that in steel needs costing category. To address Damon's comment about timeframe on this is we're getting to a crucial point, not crucial, but we're getting to a tight window on when we can make a decision on such a project like this. There are some pieces such as steel, such as footings, things like that, that need to be coordinated well ahead of time, and we all know that this work cannot be done during school. So all of this work needs to be planned out a good two, three months ahead of school being done, which means then they have a very tight window to do the work itself. So as much as Kramer is pushing for an answer as soon as possible, I mean, we really need to make a solid decision on something like this size of scope in the next month or two to really get the ball rolling and get fair prices so that we're not looking into overtime, we're not looking into things other added costs.
Can I ask for the additional? Sorry. Are the additional windows included in that 450,000?
Yes, they are.
Okay. So that masonry and the window materials, it's all included in that?
Yep. And there were a couple of windows in there, so there's a couple of that.
Still have a little sneak of shop home with this canopy design. I see the benefit. I want our kids out of the rain. I want them to have a safer place to wait for their parents. It's really hard to just jump on one of the 450s on one design. I mean, what else has been discussed here that perhaps is a little bit, you know, taking the essential off and back, but yes, we're still getting them out of the elements. We have a little preference, but not essentially just making a long roof that costs 450.
Sure. So I mean, originally the intent of looking at this area was just about the plaza piece, which would be on the right side of the photo above, and that was the 300,000 that was that Dr. Salerno had talked about previously. There were a couple of different iterations on how to achieve the canopy itself. Maybe Ryan can speak a little bit more to this, but we really needed to stay, one, with the architecture of the existing building, two, validate a goal to achieve a need or meet a need of the districts. Maybe Ryan, you can talk about some different iterations that have gone through with the staff. Yeah, so we studied a few different options, three or four, kind of the big picture schemes, but all generally with the goal of having additional coverage via roofs and canopies. When we were here to review this over the summer and, you know, kind of, you guys approved the previous amount of added renovation scope and everything, and we kind of pulled this off the table and said, let's look at a holistic cost and approach. The direction really was about more prominent and roof covering, so that's kind of how this evolved this way. Certainly you could do less scope, I mean, you have, you know, a small pan of the mound, so that does provide an area of covering, but in order to achieve what we were directed to study, which was add a significant area of covering, you know, there were only so many areas and so many ways to, I guess, study that cover something that is accessible to the pickup and drop-off lane. You know, early on, we looked at potentially putting a covering over the plaza area on the right side, but it was not as easy to tie into the entry and not as beneficial for pickup because most, you know, people are moving around picking up along that drive that heads north towards Garfield. So it would really, I guess, be about reducing the area of the roof covering if anything, if you still wanted to add some, but not as much as we're doing here.
If I could jump in with one comment here.
Right.
I think it's less about the amount of cover area and more about the amount of affected area, impacted area. So when we look at just the plaza to the right here, there's an amount of area that you're disturbing. Now we go to the left and as Ryan said, we've got some significant grading issues there. I would guess that about 35, 40% of the total cost is below ground that you can't see. We've got, one piece, I think Ryan didn't mention was I missed it, is that we've got stormwater catcher, so we are putting in another stormwater inlet. We're replacing piping, the low grade, tying that into what eventually comes out to the street. So by going to the left of the entry, we've got a lot more disturbed area, more money underground that you don't see. If you took that same canopy and took it over to the right, we're already disturbing this area to the right. So I think that's the only way you take significant cost out of this. Then you start to think about, well, how many things are we trying to accomplish in one tight area? And is that really, is that really the right move from architectural standpoint and from a function standpoint? When you, when you're trying to get some area that's out in the open, some area that's from the canopy, I think you just have to have that kind of value judgment. But to me, it's about how much area is being disturbed.
And to add to your comments, I mean, we talked, well, the current set of plans only shows concrete work and driveway where to be basically stopping and you see where these stairs are, if you were to take that out to the driveway, would stop there. So we're adding significant curb, significant sidewalk, and some repaving of the drive itself. We talked briefly about repaving the parking lot, that's kind of a separate future piece, but there's cost in here for curb, sidewalk and pavement.
I can add that that front sidewalk is in need of some attention. We've got some settling and also an 88, I've got one cutout in that curb. Literally, there's one cutout there. This will have a cutout that goes through that, most of that curb radius. So it'll certainly improve accessibility to that area.
So a while ago, we had a motion from Danny. Is there a second?
A second.
All right. Motion by Danny, seconded by Damon. Is there any other discussion?
I have a comment, and that is, so we've talked quite a bit about functional aspects of this. I think we shouldn't be too quick to discount the importance of the aesthetics as well. I mean, this is the face of the building that everybody will see as they drive by. It's a landmark within our community. We've got a great project here. I think, I don't think it's unwise to pay attention to what it looks like from the outside, especially on the front. And I think this is a nice looking design. I think it's that canopy off to the left as you're facing the building adds a balance to it that I like.
Well, also you think of how many people come to our school. Like, if you've never been here before and you see the back part of the school, you're going to start thinking that's the main entrance.
Well, that's why we, yeah.
Yeah.
That's why we talked about it earlier in the first place.
You know, we host solo ensemble round, basketball tournaments. I mean, there's stuff going on all the time at the school and I, I don't know, I think saying, this is where you come in, this is, you know, welcoming. Whereas right now, it's just like, uh, do I come that door? Because honestly, for a while, I thought this was the main entrance because this looked more main entrance-y than over there did. I didn't know when I first moved to town, I had no idea. All right, so we have motion by Danny, seconded by Damon. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, team. That's been due to the board.
All right, moving on to seven C, consideration of board letter to the Public Service Commission. I don't know which one was the, I don't know who's here.
Would it be okay if I just tee it up for you?
Sure, go ahead, please.
You know, so Rod and Timberly have planned the liaison to the work being done with the ATC line, and we understand we're now entering into an important phase where people can provide testimony or letters, if you will, to the Public Service Commission. And Rod graciously agreed to put something together for the board's reaction and you'll see that in the chat. Brett, do you mind carrying us through that, please?
Sure, so what I have written for your consideration is a comment on the scoping of the PSC and the DNR's environmental impact study. We will have the opportunity as we move through the process, in fact, we'll have almost an immediate opportunity to comment on a draft environmental impact study itself. But this comment, which is why it reads the way that it does in parts, because we're making suggestions to the PSC and the DNR about how they should essentially construct their study, where their buoys in the study should be. So you may notice that it's not, it's not typical in its language. Typically, when we want to make an argument to a government agency, we're very direct, but what we're asking the PSC and the DNR to do is to consider issues in different ways than they might be thinking about them. And I'd be happy to have any comment that anyone has.
Motion to approve, it's very well received. Motion by Danny, seconded by Jeff. Any discussion?
So I like that last statement you made, because I'm trying to wrap my head around this, because I have some concerns about a lot of the literature that's out there. What I quite honestly consider scare tactics that are very frustrating to me. And I would rather deal with the data. So if our district is going to say, we're worried that this is going to reduce property values, then we should be prepared to say, this is how much property you have on the line. This is the current valuation, this is the current mill rate, this is what will happen. So I don't want to throw out scare tactics and generalizations and, oh, up to 30%, when one of the reports cited said that maybe 10% would be what the property values would be changed. But the way you said that makes me reconsider that and say, you're just asking, hey, when you do your study, don't forget these are all the things you should, you're not refuting the study yet or offering your own encounter.
That's, that's correct. So the, and you're exactly right, Damon, there are all kinds of arguments being made about all kinds of different issues. And you've heard me say before that our, I think our job is to make as simple an argument as direct an argument as we can. In this document, what we're asking, we're making an argument for the, for the PSC to construe issues in a way that they haven't thought about them before. Issues that, that only, or perhaps only a body like our school, school board could think about them. And that, and some of those are, all of them that I can think of are in the, are in the scoping comment that you, that you see. And the other good news is that the issues that we addressed in this letter are tied directly to how the other groups in our area are talking about the transmission line, the arguments that they're making about it, and I thought that was very important as well.
Any other discussion? All right.
I really like number six. I think we should just plaster that a little bit, boys.
Yeah.
The resulting loss of tax revenue for our district because of the decrease property values.
And that's, that's one of the worries with me. I view that as a scare tactic. I don't want to throw that out there without numbers to back that up.
But even if it goes down 1%, that's still going to trickle down to less money that we have.
Let's do what we did with the referendum and say, it could do this, this is what that would mean. It could do this, this is what that means. Because I, I don't think it's fair to make it sound like this is going through the heart of town and affecting, you know, 1,000 property owners. I don't know what it is, how many it's affecting, how many acres it is, how many tax dollars that is. I don't want to come down like I'm supporting the plan, but I just don't want to spread false information or scare tactics. I just, I'm uncomfortable with that.
But remember, even if it's a fraction of a percent, it's still a loss to this community where there is, if I'm understanding how this all works, there's no scenario where this community benefits in any way directly from this. There's no monetary gain, there's nothing.
That's correct. And you look at a map of our district and six of the nine municipalities that we serve are directly touched by the line, not just like sort of near it. They're directly, they're directly affected. We have, we have two routes. The preferred route goes through, directly through the western part of Springdale before it goes near the village and down around the, and then, and then through the town of Blue Mounds and through the village of Blue Mounds. So it's, it's gonna, there will be, there will be a disc impact. I don't think there's any doubt about it.
Remember, this is probably 25 in their portfolio. Remember, they've done, what number? This is their last one. The CHA is the last one. I don't remember what number it is.
Right, I can hear you.
The 20s. Where we watched all those communities lose physical dollars from the tax base. So it isn't a scare tactic, then look up and see how much those towns lost.
And I did this for my speech class. I actually wrote about this so that I could also study and, you know, kill the words of stone, and depending on which day you read it, it is anywhere from 10 to 30, were the different numbers I found from all the different sources. So I don't think we can say, oh, well, it's 25. I think it's, it depends on the community, but it's been anywhere from 10 to 30.
But even at the lowest, 10, it's a lot. It's impactful for us.
And the actual cost of what your taxes are going to go up to pay for this in the long run anyway is going to be, I mean, your profit tax is going to go down, the cost is going to go up to pay for it, it doesn't benefit us.
Well, the studies that have been done on the decrease in property value have been done on properties that were directly affected by, by the transmission line. And there is, there is empirical evidence that property values of those properties that can simply see the line will go down as well.
That's what, that's what concerns me more. It's one thing to say property values go down, even if we say, take the low end and say 10%. I don't want to imply that the entire village is going to see their property values go down 10%.
But that's what might actually happen.
And what I have, I have.
Not if you're citing these studies that don't verify that. So be careful. I don't want to be accused of spreading false information. I mean, it's very uncomfortable.
Right. I think if you read, if you read number five, I think you can be, based on the concerns that you voiced, I think you could be comfortable with the approach that we're taking.
All right, so we have a motion by Danny, seconded by Jeff. Any more discussion?
So you don't mention that I saw the property over by the district? Is that a concession? Or is that a one?
Well, that, that would not necessarily be a scoping argument. We can, we can make that, we can make that argument as, as an impact argument. And we'll have the opportunity to do that between now and the first part of February for a different, for a, on a different document.
Didn't I read that they changed the line so it doesn't, it goes like around our boundaries?
Unfortunately, I don't think that's true.
No?
I think that was a, I think that was folklore.
All right. All right, so we have motion by Danny, seconded by Jeff. All right. All right. All right. So we have motion by Danny, seconded by Jeff. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Seven D. Policy first reading, employee personnel records. Policy 526.
This was a policy that came through the Personnel Committee, right? Welcome.
Thank you for waiting so patient.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to present our proposed revisions to the policy. I will start off by saying that safeguarding our employee files is a responsibility that we own and we take very seriously. So in terms of the proposed revisions, I'll talk through them very briefly. And you don't answer any questions. The first revision that our committee discussed is in the second paragraph. And essentially, it's delegating the authorization for an employee to do their personnel file from the superintendent to their designated. And that's just so we can ensure that we meet the employee's request. The second revision in the following paragraph. I always prefer to be upfront with our employees, and this sentence addition meets that. And there could be a cost associated, so we just wanted that clarification in the policy. The next paragraph, of course, we limit access to personnel files. This is the list, and the revisions in front of you are ones that may get more current, including some name changes as well as adding human resources. And then the last revision is just a minor clarification to avoid any redundancy with just taking out the more individual and keeping it with employee. Then, of course, at the very end, we added a cross-reference to the Board of Education policy access to public records where applicable.
Motion number?
Second.
Motion by Diana, seconded by Diana. Seconded by Brad. Any discussion? All right. Since this is a first reading, we have to roll call vote. Danny?
Yes.
Damon?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Rod?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. Policy passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Consideration of distribution of 2019, 2020 4K contract sites. Can't possibly be 2020.
Isn't it crazy?
Can't possibly be going to 2020.
How fun is that?
Ms. Straka? Sorry, I just see 2020. Just kind of flipped it for a second. Say it again.
I understand.
So annually, we come to the Board of Education to look for approval for the 4K site contracts. We had this brought up in our education committee meeting, talking about the language. And then last board meeting, that the board approved the current language of the contract. We did not make any changes. So now we're looking at approving our sites and, or because that registration will be starting January at some point.
Motion number? Seconded by Diana, seconded by Jeff. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I know the board joins me in thanking our 4K partner sites for what they do every day for our kids. And thank you, Sarah and Nicole, for really outstanding oversight of their good work.
Hey, moving on to seven S. Review and approve the district's school safety plan. Mr. Johnson, get back up.
As we've, we've discussed within about the last year or so, we've updated our emergency plan and our safety process and procedures for every school and as a district. And as according to Act 143, that was passed this last winter, we now, as a school board, have requirements that we have to pass on a yearly basis. So this is the first one, which is to approve our, our safety plans for the school district.
And we've already seen this, right? You just didn't approve it the last time because we didn't realize that was one of our requirements.
That's correct. And so when we went through and we got a, we got a reminder email, we've gotten a whole bunch of that lately from them because there's a lot of things in that, in that act. Some were connected to the grants, some were not. And so this was one of the components is that they want to see word minutes of approval passed, so.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Diana, seconded by Brad. Any discussion?
We'll just say, we sent a letter to all families on Friday, kind of reiterating the whole process that we've gone through, the grants that we've gotten, and letting everybody know that tomorrow, actually, in every building, we're doing our first barricading practice. Sad for keeping it really lighthearted. It's, you know, just kind of a fun, as fun as we can, you know, the activity to go through and barricading the classrooms and kind of discovering different ways to keep the doors locked, so. So we'll be doing that tomorrow in every building. And we'll be, the administrative team will be going around and trying to get to as many as we can to help support it as well.
So we have motion by Dan, seconded by Brad. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Brian's leadership, along with several of our staff members who are part of the District-wide Safety Committee, might I just be able to mention them? And if I forget any, you'll tell me?
You bet.
Of course, we've got at the elementary level, Katie Ginnin.
Yep.
At the middle school level, Melissa Hansen. High school level, Deanne. And then, don't forget our school nurse, Pam Schump, right?
Correct. You got her on.
All of them have done such a nice job putting together that letter, and they continue to work with our Mount Gore Police Department. They've been great partners in this process, so a tip of the hat to them as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. All right. Seven G. Consider approval of draft, draft FabLab grant.
Ms. Sarah Straka, here. So for the past several years, the Southland Economic Development Corporation has provided the FabLab grant. And we've applied recent years. We're just, we're a little too far, I think, we're a little too far out from seeing its realization. Now that we have this magical great space being built, I believe we have a better chance of receiving this grant. So if any of your work packet receives the majority of the materials that we will be submitting, the due date is December 13th. So per Board of Policy, depending on that we have a matching grant. So we are looking to receive $25,000, therefore, we max $25,000 we need Board approval. So that $25,000, you can ask where that's gonna come from, looking at the equipment and technology needs. We have funds allocated for that within the referendum, so we'll be pulling from that source for that match.
Motion number?
Second.
All right. We'll say Jeff and Rod, because they're both around this side. All right. And.
Hurt by that.
I know, it's science. Okay, I'm sorry. I know, it's science. I'll say, Diana said yep really loud. I'll make, we'll make notes.
That'll be in the notes. One system.
Please reflect in the notes. All right. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion carries. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
You.
All right. Eight A. Citizens comments.
I had to step away for a moment to grab a power cord, but there are two things I wanted to add for the communities in what related, well, actually, three things, related to mental health and wellness. First, our board is continuing to have conversations around the impact of testing on students' mental health and wellness. And we continue to be very receptive from community members of any feedback they might have about their own student's experience that could help us in lightening and furthering the conversation. And so thank you to Director Straka and Directors Johnson for fielding those, those calls and emails as they come in. Secondly, we're so thankful to have the partnership of Oregon Mental Health Services. While we're in its infancy with that program, I think we're continuing to see that program get up and move and do great things for kids. We encourage families to notify their building principals, particularly in the middle school and the high school levels, to see if we can offer continued supports there. And then, lastly, I wanted to invite everyone in the community to participate in a conversation that we promised back on August 11th we were going to continue to have. You might remember back on August 11th, we were at the height of really a very difficult time in our school community surrounding student mental health and wellness. And we convened, thanks to the great leadership of the Mental Health and Wellness Community Coalition, a listening session, a goal planning session. And that took place over at the bank on the second floor. Anyone who remembered being a part of that, you know what a productive morning that was. Each entity, the school and the coalition, established three goals. And we've been working those goals now over the course of the past several months. And we believe it's time to report out to our community. And so we would like to do that on Monday evening, January the 7th. It's gonna be at 5:00 PM over at the Norse. And it's an opportunity now to report out where we are at our goals, but is there an opportunity now to establish another goal or two? Just to keep the conversation front and center, keep the conversation moving us forward and doing good things for kids and doing good things for our community. So I would extend a personal heartfelt welcome to everybody and anybody who hears this message, and we'd love to have their participation.
You said that's at 5 o'clock?
Yep. 5 o'clock. And then that will go from 5 to about 6:30. And then 7 o'clock, that night, we're working.
Okay. All right. Any other citizens comments? All right. Number nine are all of our future agenda items. Always, if you have anything, let us know. 10 is our schedule of next meetings. And now we'll move on to number one, and close section, closed session. Contemplating closed session for Section 19.85, Grand I, Emperor, Grand C, Emperor, and the statute for considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction for exercising responsibility.
Second.
By Jeff, seconded by Brad. Roll call vote. Danny?
Yes.
Damon?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Rod?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. Let's take five.